Is being recorded and broadcast by North Brookfield LPAK and we have located them on the Zoom. So we know they're there. Uh, this meeting is also being broadcast via Zoom. As a remote meeting, it is important that we continue to respect the privacy and confidentiality of the members of our school community. Including our teachers and staff and our students and families. If you are participating in this meeting remotely, you agree that you will not save, record, share, or post this session or any photos from this session. We also agree that we will not save, record, share, or post this session or any photos from this session. If you do not agree to these rules, please disconnect from this session now. Um, so as you can see, we do have a lot of people joining us via Zoom. Um, and just as a, and people may, you know, hopefully have questions. Um, so just to sort of outline how we're going to do this with public participation. Um, on our agenda, we always have public participation. It's always part of our meetings. Um, and we'll get to that. Um, we're going to have 20 minutes for public participation. People who want to speak, um, will get three minutes each. Um, but we are going to ask if you have any questions related to the budget that you wait until after, uh, Mr. Lynn has presented the financial reports. And then we'll have a period of questions about the budgets. If you want to speak during public participation about other, um, items on the agenda. Um, if you could message Tim Canada, uh, here, and his name is spelled just like the country. Um, if you message him via the chat function, um, and he will be keeping a list and he will unmute you when it is your turn. Um, that's if you're on Zoom. Uh, if anyone was in person, they would just simply raise your hand. When you, um, are unmuted and ready to speak, um, if you could say your name and your address. Um, and then, you know, you have your three minutes. Um, if you prefer not to speak, but you have a question, you can send a question to Tim via the chat. With your name and address, um, as well in, you know, when you write the message. Um, and then we'll take time for those questions. And what might happen is if there's repeat questions, we may, uh, synthesize those, um, because a lot of people might have similar questions. All right. Um, so I don't think, I think right now we have our four committee members. Uh, I think our fifth one is, is will be showing up pretty soon, Ruth. And we do want to especially mention Ruth. Today is her last meeting as a school committee member, so when she arrives, we'll get back to her. But, uh, moving on, um, we have a student advisory council and, um, Megan Bockus will be presenting for them. So, and, and Mr. Lynn is looking for you. It's going to take a little bit.
Okay, I'm, I think I'm good now. Can you hear me fine?
Got you, Megan.
Okay. So we just have a few updates for student council. Um, so we attended the virtual Hyannis Conference this year on April 9th. The Eboard and a few other of the council members got together in a small group. And we attended the Zoom meetings together in the high school cafeteria. Everyone dressed in their formal attire like they would if we were actually going to the conference. And we had pizza and snacks while listening to the keynote speaker, all socially distanced with the, like the barriers up at lunch, the lunch tables. And then on the following Saturday, we all attended the conference workshops at home. We are planning on holding a spirit week on May 17th to the 21st. And the days are still to be determined. Students can look for flyers around the school and posts for updates about the days. And then finally, we have teacher appreciation week. Um, this is being planned from May 3rd to the 5th. We are creating cards and making personalized awards for each of the teachers. And those will be put in our mailbox on Friday, the 5th. And that's it for student council this month.
That's great. And I, I love the fact that you're, um, doing personalized awards for all the teachers. That's, that's fabulous. This has been such a, such a difficult year for, um, for, for our teachers and they've done a wonderful, wonderful job. Which actually reminds, um, if, are you done, Megan?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, I just want to take a couple of minutes, um, and say what I have been saying, I think every meeting we've had since last year, which is, um, I am really grateful to our staff and our administrators. They've done a wonderful job. This year, um, and our parents and children community, they've, um, everyone has tried to do their best. It hasn't always been easy. Certainly I've had tough days, my kids and I, um. But I want to make sure that people understand how much, uh, the staff, how much you're appreciated. Um, and that, and the administrators. You know, I said that every time, but it is very true and very sincere and I, I, I hope you, uh, believe it, believe it. So, all right. So we have to move on to, um, approving. We have two sets of minutes to approve. The first set is the regular meeting of March 15th, 2021.
Well, move that we approved the regular meeting of March 13th, 2021 minutes.
All in favor? Did we raised our hand? Um, and we also, um, have a, the special meeting of March 31st. We need to approve those minutes as well.
I second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. So we have a little correspondence to share. Mr. Lynn, you have that or am I sharing that? Oh, I got it right here. So as everyone should be aware, um, we've been, North Brookfield has been, um, doing a regionalization study. Since, uh, actually about a year ago. And as it happens, you know, you know, our study was to look at the three adjoining, uh, districts, Quabog, Spencer, East Brookfield and Quavon as a potential regional partner. I received this letter, the beginning of April, from the chair of the Quabog, uh, school committee and basically was a, a, an invitation to join, um, the Quabog regionalization study. They, uh, also received a grant from a different round of grants than we did. And they invited us to join them, um, from the members from Warren, West Brookfield. Um, to talk about a potential, that's another study to potentially regionalize with them. Um, I declined the invitation because the meeting that they invited us to was April 28th, which is actually the same night as the regionalization committee meeting in, in North Brookfield. Um, the North Brookfield Regionalization Committee is hopefully going to come to, um, a finish soon with a recommendation for the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. Um, so you know, if Quabog is, happens to be the district that we recommend to regionalize, regionalize with, then of course we would, um, contact, uh, Mr. Schwenker, who's the, uh, the chair, um, of Quabog and let him know that we'd be interested in meeting. Um, also something I became aware of this week, which is on the May 7th town meeting warrant, there is a, uh, article for the town to vote on regionalizations, on regionalization, and I believe it was put there in case, uh, the recommendation came from the committee. Um, I was not informed of this in any way. I just happened to read about it in the newspaper, so.
Mr. Lynn, were you informed in some way about the warrant?
Always know.
So just if anyone sees the warrant, just so you know, this is, um, you know, I think we've mentioned this many, many times. You know, regionalization, if we were to pursue it, is a very long process. It's not something that happens within a year. It's like a three to five year process. Um, and we will see after our meeting on Wednesday, the 28th and see what, if we come to a recommendation or not. All right. So I think, where are we still waiting for Ruth? All right. So that's our correspondence. Um, so do we have any presentations?
Uh, it'll come during financial, uh, the financial reports.
Okay. So on our agenda, the next section is public participation. And as I've said at the beginning of the meeting, if you have anything that you want to, uh, discuss or bring up. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, uh, I just was aware that Senator Goby actually is on the meeting with us. And Senator Goby, I don't know if you want to take a few minutes and, and speak?
Um, thank you. No, I, I'm just, um, I, I don't get an opportunity to get into too many of the meetings. I try to get to the watchers and try to get it to some of the other district meetings and, um, wanted to get on. I know that you've got, uh, a lot coming up with, with budget. The House is doing the, the House budget right now and we have our budget in May, so I always like to hear some of the finance things that are going on. If I can be helpful as we're moving forward. Of course, we've done the chapter 70 numbers for, for this fiscal year, but it's always good to hear what else is happening in the schools. So, thank you.
Thanks, Senator. So anyway, going back, public participation, we have 20 minutes now. If there is anyone who wants to speak to anything that, uh, is on the agenda that is not related to the budget. Um, please let Tim know with a message via chat.
So I've got two so far.
Okay.
Then, uh, one of them was just thinking, Ethan will add for the link to the meeting. The other one is, uh, someone whose audio is not working, uh, Matthew Grant. He was asking about, uh, rescheduling the regionalization meeting so they could attend the Quabog meeting also.
Well, you know, I, I think, you know, the process for the North Brookfield regionalization, we're basically coming to the end. You know, the hope is on Wednesday, we are going to have a recommendation at the end of the meeting. The invitation from Quabog, this is just the beginning of that, their process. So, you know, if we are to decline the first meeting and the recommendation is Quabog, then we can of course join in the series of meetings that they will be having, um, for the next several months. Um, so that's, you know, I, it doesn't, this doesn't mean that we're saying, no, we're not going to regionalize with Quavon. It means that at this time we have to finish up our process and then we'll know what we're going to do. So hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Grant.
So far, that's, uh, the only question that's come through.
All right. Anybody else? Any questions?
I am not seeing anything right now.
All right, um. Oh, okay. Did Ruth, you see Ruth on there? Oh, I think she just texted me. She's on. All right, cool. So we're going to go back. We're going to recognize Ruth Hauntham before we move on to the next part of our agenda. Um, because it appears no one else is, um, raising their hands virtually to speak, uh, during public participation. So Ruth, is your camera on? Is she unmuted?
No.
Okay.
I can turn it on.
Would you, would you be so kind to turn it on, Ruth? So Ruth is coming back. She's coming back from her class because she's studying to be, uh, tell me again, physical therapist?
It's a therapist assistant.
Okay. So she's a, she's a hardworking single mother of a, a son who is now 15, believe it or not, right? Um, and Ruth, this is your, this would be your fourth year on the school committee, right Ruth? And this year? So I, uh, Ruth, um, actually was appointed her first year. She was on the committee before any of the rest of us. She was appointed for her first year and then she ran. Um, and, and won a, through a, a term of three years, which is now what she is finishing up. Um, I'm known Ruth for, Ruth for a while. We were on the PTO for, uh, a while together and, um, one really vivid memory I have is that we were at some meeting, some PTO meeting, and I don't know who it was. It was some administrator talking about school committee and there were seats open on the school committee if anyone wanted to be on the school committee. And Ruth and I looked at each other. We were both like, yeah, never. That's never going to happen. Uh, then like, you know, a couple of years later, Ruth is on there and then I ran for school committee too. Um, so, um, I have always really appreciated, Ruth is a very thoughtful person. She isn't necessarily the most vocal person, but she is very thoughtful in her opinions, um, and decisions and, um, she may not always share it publicly, but she is also very strongly, uh, believer in public education. Very strong supporter, always of public education. And I just want to thank you Ruth for your years of service and we will miss you, but you're going on to bigger and better things, so.
Thank you. I'll miss you guys too.
If you were here, we'd have a vegan chocolate cake for you. Well, actually, we could eat with the other. We can't. Oh, and we do have Ruth. Can you see a certificate?
I can't see it, but thank you.
This is, the certificate is awarded to Ruth Hauntham, given in recognition for your years of service as a school committee member and for your dedication to education and our community. Issued this 26th day of April, 2021. So from, from me to, to you, working with you as a school committee member has been wonderful. As Maria said, you are thoughtful in, um, every decision and, and you always ask the right questions and, and, um, enforce this to think. So I, I appreciated, uh, the, the four years that you were on during my tenure because, uh, you were, have been a huge advocate for, uh, for our schools and for our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Chelsea is going to thank you in the chat through 85.
Ah, there you go. Awesome. Yeah, if anybody knows Ruth, say thank you. Because you know what? I don't think once you signed up for this, you really expected, uh, the last couple of years, so.
No, they told me that, that my first year was going to be really easy. And then the superintendent quit, so. It wasn't easy.
Actually, I'm pretty sure I, everybody I told. And I, I'm pretty sure someone told me that too. All right. So thanks Ruth. And we'll, uh, we'll celebrate in person with you later.
Okay.
So moving on, now we're, we're getting to the financial reports part of the, uh, evening.
Yep. So, um,
Can you share those?
Um, we won't really share very well. It's like 10 pages long.
Okay.
I'll be able to scroll. I can share it at a later point.
Okay. So Mr. Lynn's going to go through the financial report and at some point he will actually share these. And these, of course, are public records, so.
So what you have in your packet is, um, both the, uh, district line items and grant reports. We are in really decent shape right now. I wouldn't say great, but we're in really decent shape. Uh, we're on track in terms of budgeting. Uh, there will be a need to, um, balance some of these accounts. For example, district software, it's about a third of the way down on the first page is, uh, is over by, uh, about $4,400. Um, we've recently experienced an issue through, uh, Charter Spectrum. We had our,
Like everybody else in town?
And maybe it's not news, but so when we had our network done in our internal, uh, it was built for going one to one. Uh, what Charter needed to do was then upgrade their service to be able to handle the volume now that students are all back and staff are all back. So it was a, a, a software kind of upgrade for us. So that's a recent expenditure that really, um, has put that over, but uh, these are ongoing things that do occur. We have other, other line items that, you know, aren't, you know, meeting their maximum and, uh, and, and this is just the, the process by which we get to especially disappointing you in the last quarter of the year. We might've had more significant expenditures in one area and less in another, so. Some of the, some of the other places that you'll see some, um, some overages. For example, we have some speech services that were over. We increased, um, our speech services, uh, which was un, left unbudgeted. It was based on the fact that we, um, when we were remote, our, the ability for our speech personnel to meet everyone, all the students' IEP hours was impossible. Uh, because kids weren't here enough and some of the services couldn't be done remotely. And so we did increase those. Um, that will be balanced out because it was budgeted through some of our, um, pandemic relief funds. So right now it's an overage on our, uh, our line items in our budget. But it'll be balanced out by the, the pandemic relief. So, uh, you'll see some of that in some of our, uh, our various lines. Same thing with the paraprofessionals. We had a couple of paraprofessionals. We had to move to the remote program and then we had obviously to backfill some of our needs here. Um, so again, some of that is covered by pandemic relief. And some of it will simply be a balance of some of the salary lines with this unencumbered funds. Um, homeless transportation is over significantly. Uh, we knew this. We budget a certain amount and we never know what might occur in, in a student's life during the course of a school year. And we did have, uh, some needs to provide transportation to students who were deemed homeless. So again, that will be something that we can manage internally. Um, high school buildings is, uh, is, is nearly double. We had some fairly significant uh, needs to upgrade that, um, building, particularly in regards to some of the, um, HVAC systems and, um, and windows. We had some windows that didn't open. Those are things that we took care of early. I mean, it's not just being fixed now. They were fixed last summer, but that's part of this school year. And I'm really excited to report that, uh, this report balanced. And while it was off by 14 cents, but what we've determined is the Excel spreadsheet rounds to two decimal places and, but sometimes it figures it out many decimal places. So you get off a few cents as, in various accounts and and it, and it does add up. So, um, it, it feels like between the town and our office, our business office, we've gotten past some of the major discrepancies that have occurred in balancing the account. So a, a big thank you to the town offices, uh, treasurer, town accountant and Mary Beth Kalariski in, in our business office. For, for, uh, working hard to finally get there in April to know where we were balance wise. In terms of the grant accounts, there's a lot of unchanged here because there are things such as our athletic, uh, accounts. Some of our, um, you know, parking fees and van revolve. Um, not a lot has happened unfortunately this year, just because of the pandemic and sort of the limited interactions we've been able to have. In terms of some of the other, you know, accounts, things like school choice, circuit breaker, those are updated regularly as we receive, um, reimbursements from the state on a regular basis, or we expend funds out of those accounts. Um, to, you know, per our offsets from the budget.
Can you just give a quick, I'm not a, just a quick little explanation that circuit breaker is related to special education costs?
Yeah, circuit break is a, a, um, a state program to reimburse school districts for what they kind of call really significant special education costs. And, and that is done at the start of each year based on a student's IEP and the needs that they have. So Mr. Minucci and Melody in his office spend an inordinate amount of time going through to say, what are the expenses that you can actually submit? Transportation used to not be included in that. We know if we have to transport a student to an out of district placement, it can be as much as the tuition. That is now included, which is wonderful.
Thanks, Senator.
You know, so, um, so, so that, that program, um, really, um, does support the needs of, of our, uh, of our budget to support students who have really significant needs. In terms of, um, some of the other, um, important accounts, the pandemic relief accounts. Um, we still have, uh, funding in, in our ESER 1, S and, and
What does ESER stand for again?
That's the, the, the first CARES Act money.
So ESER means something in federal government language. And there's been, so we've had two rounds and there's a third round that is coming.
Right. So we received in, in the first round, $65,000 and that was to sort of open the school year. Uh, we've also received some other funding that we've really gone through to, to make it through this year. And there is some funding left in that that we are planning to use for, in next year's budget as an offset. We have received our allocation for ESER 2. Um, that consists of about, um, $255,000. That we've already included in the budget for next year as an offset. ESER 3 is the most recent federal relief package, which is, um, the American Relief Plan that was signed in January, you know, around there. There are estimates that, uh, put it at, for us as a school district, and I know the town also receives some funding for that, through that, of between $500,000 and $600,000. That, these different federal relief programs have different ending dates by which you have to spend the funds. So ESER 1 is through the end of next year. ESER 2 is through the following year and ESER 3 is through September, 2024. So we know that this pandemic has had huge implications uh, for kids that will last multiple years. And that's the reasoning that, you know, the federal government Congress has authorized it this way is, you know, if we get $600,000 from the federal government, we can spend it all in 2022. But in 2023 and 24 and 25, that, that creates a structural deficit in our budget essentially, that we're, you know, paying for all these things with a one-time expense and there's no funding to support it in the next year and the year after that.
And there aren't there certain restrictions on how the money has to be spent? I understand some of it has to be spent on?
Yeah, ESER 2 has a $10,000 kicker to make it 265 instead of 255. That requires districts to spend, uh, on social emotional needs of students. So it might be hiring additional council. Might be purchasing, uh, SEL curriculum. It might be, um, other support services. So, uh, recognizing the social emotional impact of what the pandemic has done to kids and families by extension and providing services and supports, uh, to do that. So what we've tried to do is make sure that we're not spending all the money that, from these federal programs in FY 22, next year's budget. And then have no way to continue them in FY 23. So to create some sustainability over several years, which we know is going to, um,
Because the idea of the money is to, because one of the things a lot of people are concerned about is kids' mental health, kids' learning and the understanding that there may be a few years that kids,
The catch up.
Right. So kids will need extra support, um, going forward, three or four years. Correct?
Yep. Um, also in this report, um, let's see if I can find it. So last year we received, um, state rural aid. I believe the amount was about $33,000 and that was issued late in the school year and it's kind of part of a supplemental budget. You know, at the end of the year, the state, because the state rural aid was something that was in the budget, but I don't think it survived the original budget. But then after the fact, as the state sort of sees where the revenues are, it was something that they implemented. And we got $33,000 late last year.
Last calendar year?
Yes, last school year. I just received and I informed the, uh, school committee that we received this year's state rural aid. Um, in the last, I don't know, four, four weeks or so ago. Uh, in the amount of, I think it was 28, $25,000, sorry.
And thanks to Senator Goby for that too, because originally we weren't included. We were in the lowest tier, so.
Yeah.
And also thanks to Elizabeth. For recognizing North Brookfield as a rural town. Anyway.
Yeah.
So.
And, and they set it up in tiers, as you said, and we're in tier three, which is, and it's all based on population density. So, um, so those are really good things. And again, we're looking at using that to help offset the budget next year, which we know is going to be challenger, challenging. So, um, and then lastly, we have received our, uh, small rural schools grant from the federal government. Uh, and, and in last year, I believe we received $42,000 for that. It's a federal program. But this year, uh, that was reduced, I believe, down to about $37,000. So, um, again, and that is being used to support next year's budget. So if you remember in my budget presentation and the budget that the school committee approved, we have included quite a bit of, of sort of one-time expenditures. And, and those do create structural deficits. So we put money from state rural aid in. If we don't get rural aid next year, then the following year, you don't have the budget money through the town to replace that. So those expenditures, you know, to spend on staff, you can't continue to hire the staff. You don't have. Um, so those expenditures, you know, to spend on staff, you can't continue to hire the staff, you don't have the funds. So we're trying to be thoughtful about not just next year, but the years beyond uh next.
So before we move on to the uh your next presentation on the finances, um I just want to say, so all of our financial reports are, of course, public record. Um, and there's been a lot of, uh, you know, innuendo or or is it innuendo or input inference? Is that what I want? Um, but somehow the school is mismanaging money and has been for years. Um, I gotta, I gotta be honest. Okay, um, I gotta be honest that I personally am offended by that. Um, I've worked with Mr. Lind for five years. I worked with Sheila O'Toole, uh, LeBlanc, sorry. Sorry, Mr. LeBlanc, um, when she worked here and also Mary Beth Kalarowski. Um, Mr. Lind actually is is excellent with the budget. Um, and I'm sure he would be thrilled to sit down and talk to people and go over the budget in great detail with you. So if that's something you ever want to spend, you know, a couple hours doing with Mr. Lind, I'm sure he would try and make time with to for you. Um, but just also, you know, Sheila, LeBlanc, and Mary Beth, they're very um hardworking, dedicated women um with a lot of integrity. Um, and I um am very, very unhappy um at the, and I'm I'm still just gonna call it an innuendo, that there somehow is mismanagement in the school budget. You know, schools are really expensive to run. That's just the uh reality of it. Um, our budget is well, is really well managed and as he told you, it was, you know, balanced within fourteen cents and that just had something to do with the Excel, the Excel uh form. So that's just, want to make sure everybody knows that, so.
Thank you, Maria.
Sure.
All right, let me see if I can do this.
So this is the highlight of the evening that everyone's waiting for.
We'll see. We'll see. I hope that people can see this. I'm assuming they can.
If you can't see it on the screen, can you
Message him. I see some shapes of the head, yes, that they can see it. So. So I'm gonna work through this um real quickly and give you a sense of where we're at uh as town meeting approaches on May seventh. So um on, at the February twenty uh second school committee meeting, the school committee approved uh uh an FY two preliminary budget town meeting request of six million, five hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents. That is a three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollar and twenty cents increase over FY twenty-one. That's this year's budget. Well, five point six seven percent. Um, as you can see, we have a a budget request of, if you work down, eight million, one thirty-four less offsets. That one point two million dollars is things like school choice, our federal entitlement grants like Title One, Title Two A, Title Four, uh special education grants, um circuit breaker, these are are funding we're receiving, so we offset our budget with that. I mentioned COVID relief funds using for next year, the remaining S R one and S R two funding. I remember I I mentioned state rural aid and small rural schools grant um for a total net request of six point five million dollars.
So that's, that is, the net request is what we um sent to the town.
This is what we're asking the town to approve. And 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 it's kind of spelled out what I just said in in words there. I think an important point is the third bullet. The third bullet reads um that last year during the spring, during the budget cycle, we knew it was a difficult year with the pandemic and what were revenues going to be and um and so knowing that that finances were going to be tight, the the teachers' union voted to forego their two thousand and twenty-one cost of living increase. And the administrators each did that individually because administrators have individual employment contracts. So no one, no teacher or administrator accepted their FY twenty-one cost of living increase, even though it was represented in their uh contract. Uh, if those increases had been in the contract, in in the budget, our actual amount this year's budget would have risen is three point eight two percent. That that those folks giving up their raises saved over a hundred thousand dollars in the FY twenty-one budget. And there's been some implications that this year's budget is a double raise of some some sort. That is not accurate. That's not the way it works. We know what each person is going to receive. It's outlined in their contract. Teacher, we know what a teacher is going to get for their salary. We know what an administrator is going to get for their salary. So all as we did is returned to sort of back on schedule. And that's why the the increase in the salary lines looks so large. The money people gave up this year is gone. They're not receiving that money extra. It's just, this is the regular progression of salaries. And I want to make sure that people understand that because it's being sort of portrayed that this really very kind act. We're talking about people turning down thousands of dollars in salary to save programs. And the second piece to me is, you know, programs versus people if we have to cut things. They are one in the same.
People, people do the programs, so if you don't have the people, you don't have the programs.
A program doesn't happen without people. So you can't have an AP program if you don't have teachers to teach. You can't have athletics if you don't have, if you can't pay coaches. You can't have extracurricular theater programs if you can't, if you don't have money to hire directors and stage people. That that's, there are other costs. You know, you can't have a program without buying books and materials, but the biggest cost we have is staff. Our school budget, school budgets are eighty percent people. That's not a North Brookfield thing. That's a, that's a Massachusetts, United States thing. Our salaries are commensurate with the area. They are not exceptionally low and they're not exceptionally high. They're very balanced for the area uh that we live in. And I just want people to make, to understand that, you know, the the FY twenty-two preliminary budget that the school committee approved is not sort of pulling the wool over uh people's eyes and giving people a double raise, uh which has sort of been thrown out there. It's just, it's just not accurate and 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 unfair, frankly. So um.
And also, this, I mean, besides that, I mean, you know, um you know, when we, when we, since Mr. Lind has started, when we write the budget, you know, we write a budget or they, the administrators write a budget and we approve a budget, um and the school committee directs, directed them to do it in a way that shows what the school needs, understanding although like in this year, you know, we have a, was it a five?
Five.
Five point six seven percent increase. That is what we would hope for. That is what, well, I mean, that is what we, the school needs really to stay level. Um, we cut the the things that we wanted that would have increased it. I think originally it was at eleven percent. Um, but we understand the town we live in that, you know, that's a large increase and we may not get that five point six seven percent. But it's important for people to understand, you know, what it is that a school requires to run. And again, that five point six seven percent really just would have kept us level. Um, and I and I think I've said this like the last four or five meetings that I've, we've been here. I went back in the town reports and went all the back, back to two thousand and six. And from two thousand and six to the most recent school year, the amount, the budget of the school budget has increased by only one, it's like one point seven percent. It was less than two percent. That's sixteen years. I mean, if you've worked for sixteen years, if you've shopped for sixteen years, if you've been an adult for sixteen years, you know, the cost of things has increased. That's, that's just the way that, you know, things work. And to not be able to put those increases into the the school budget and legitimate reasons, right? Because the town we live in, you know, now a lot of businesses, the way this, you know, state funds schools is the inequity exists for towns like ours, which is, you know, what, one of the things that Elizabeth and I worked really hard to draw, raise attention to. Um, but yet, but you you know, I, it's important for people to know what the actual, what actually is needed to run a school successfully. And, you know, North Brookfield is very, very lean. If you look at any other districts around us, the, you know, they have the minimum amount of administrators. You know, and for what, what they do, um, you know, our school does as, you know, very well, exceptionally well in a lot of cases with the minimal amount of funding.
So moving on, um, and and this really is a really important part. So after the school committee approves their budget, uh and they did that on February twenty-second, as I mentioned, I'm required to submit the the budget to the, to the, to the town, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee and Town Treasurer, Town Accountant uh by March first. Uh, that's, that's per the town bylaws. Throughout March, I I did reach out and to ask, when I submit the budget, I I ask is, you know, would love to, the school committee with an administration would like to sit down with you to talk about the budget if there's any questions. Um, understand that, you know, five point six seven may be hard. We certainly would like to work with you to figure out what that might look like. Uh, the Monday before April vacation, April twelfth, I again emailed the Chair of the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the Finance Committee and basically said, we're about a month out from town meeting. What are people, what is, what are the boards thinking about a recommendation for our school budget? Uh, as a, for the town meeting war. On April thirteenth, I received uh communication from the Chair of Board of Selectmen, reading FinCom and B O S are proposing five million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars as the town's contribution. On April thirteenth, I responded to that saying first, um, that's, is it five million or six million? Because I wasn't sure if it was a, a, you know, did someone hit the the keyboard wrong? And uh essentially said, you know, if 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 that's wrong, please let me know. That means it would be level funded, which will be challenging enough. Um, if it's correct, that that constitutes a one million dollar cut to our, to our budget, which represents a sixteen point two four percent cut uh to our budget. Um, and that it would have major implications, including program cuts um to to meet that kind, if that's what was passed. Um, I don't know a school district in the world that could, would not have those kinds of cuts, if something was.
The, that was the entire body of the
Yep.
Say you were getting a one million dollar cut for their recommending what was that one.
Yeah.
The entire, the entire email was FinCom and B O S are proposing five million, one hundred and fifty-eight, eight seventy-two is town's contribution to the FY twenty-two school budget.
So just, you know, Mr. Lynn sent the message, uh, no response. A couple of days later, I did forward his message again, asking uh the the Board of Selectmen to respond. And that was must, that would have, probably would have been maybe April fifteenth, maybe. Yeah, and no, absolutely no communication at all, nothing, so.
I did make the point in my April thirteenth response that, you know, uh, a decision of that magnitude, I would have thought would have warranted a a discussion.
And this is after having requested a tri-board meeting?
Yes. So, um.
And just, you know, I think the only time we actually, I think we've had tri-
I've never.
Um, we, we had one, we had tri-board meeting in twenty eighteen, right? Was it twenty eighteen? And then at the end of twenty eighteen, we had a second one because of, we had to request money from the town to cover some unexpected special.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, there was one in twenty eighteen. We had one ahead of the budget. That's the only one we've ever had.
And every year I do, when I submit the budget, I request that.
Yeah.
So, and this is just to Maria's point, I want to show you two charts. One is sort of the approved town meeting budget uh over the last, since thirteen fourteen. It's, it's the data that I went back to a fit best on the chart, I guess. Um, and the twenty-one, twenty-two is representative of the school committee preliminary budget. So you can see our increases have been, you know, at times two, two and a half percent. But very often, you know, one point two, zero, point five, point four, one. Every time we have a a year below two percent or two and a half percent, we fall behind. And then the next year, you can't get two percent and say we're on track again. We're not. We're behind by the previous year. There's never a catch-up. And and that's really what you see in our programs and services is the slow erosion of uh options uh and opportunities for students. What I did was, I then did the same chart with this, the Board of Selectmen FinCom recommendation. And thirteen, fourteen through twenty twenty-one is identical. I mean, you can see the 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 huge change um that would result.
So this would set us back essentially a decade
Yeah.
in funding?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for laying it out that way, because I think it's important.
You know, so, and even more, the proposed one million dollar cut is from FY twenty-one. The school committee has a preliminary budget of FY twenty-one plus three hundred and fifty thousand. So what we would actually have to cut from our current FY twenty-two budget is one million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So, yeah.
So what does that mean? Well, in other communities, and I know in this community, um, in the past, there have been cuts. We always see the arts take a hit. STEM is a relatively new program. Athletics would certainly be hit. Clubs and activities, class size would be increased probably at the elementary school. And at the junior, senior high, you'd see a reduction in course offerings because if you have less teachers, you have less teacher sections. We would have to look at transportation. State law requires us only to transport kids through grade six uh outside of two miles. Things like full-day pre-K and full-day K are not required by law. Uh, we have a dual enrollment program that we're working on at the Junior Senior High School that gives kids wonderful opportunities that we may not be able to invest in. And as I said, it would, there's, there's no question it would result in significant staff result reductions, which really is sort of how all those types of programs would be impacted. You can't have STEM if you don't have a STEM teacher. You can't have athletics if you don't have coaches. Uh, you have larger class sizes if you have less teachers. So although, and I, and I want to make this clear, those are examples of types of cuts you might see. We don't have any specific recommendations. This has all occurred in the last week, with last week being vacation week. And so we have some work to do uh in terms of looking at our budget as potentially trying to meet that, that, that number. Uh, I know the school committee uh and myself are would love to work with people who, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom to revise that recommendation if possible. Um, we feel like that is a a huge impact on our kids and families that uh is really, to me, unacceptable and shreds uh the, all the programs and services that are available to students.
So can you just, you know, clarify? Because it, it does seem like, you know, we're getting significant, we have and we are going to get a little bit, uh, some more significant money from the federal government. So why does that not offset?
So the 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 funds we've received from like the federal government um are are funds that they're recommending you use over several years. And as.
So if you were to use them all in this, then the, you know, the next year.
So just going back to my previous slide where I showed you the budget at the very beginning, just to give you COVID release funds, we have in our budget three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Once that is spent, it's gone. So next year, that three hundred and fifty-nine thousand will be in the budget in form of stuff we need to purchase, paying staff. That's why we're looking at S R three, the six hundred thousand or whatever it would be, five hundred thousand, to use it for the following year so that we don't see these. We don't see these drastic, you know, we survived this year, but we have to cut next year. We certainly could spend it all, but if we spent that three hundred and fifty nine plus the six hundred thousand, we just created a one million dollar structural deficit in our bu- budget. Uh, that.
So basically, we'd just, if we spent it all this year, we'd just be looking at this again next year.
Yeah, the whole, and the whole idea is, we know that it's going to take several years using the pandemic relief fund to support students' academic, social, emotional needs. Can't do, we're not going to fix things in a year. We're going to slowly catch up. It, it's. You know, I guess. The town also does receive educational funding in the form of chapter seventy. Um, this year it's slated for four million, three hundred and eight thousand dollars, which is about a eighteen thousand dollar increase over last year. Um, and certainly the chapter seventy funding. Has been and will continue to be an issue for some time. Although the Student Opportunity Act was passed. The amount of funds that are needed to sort of completely meet it, to completely fund it, I think it's about two billion dollars. Is going to take, the state has, I believe, a seven year implementation program. And I believe about sixty school districts out of the three hundred and fifty one this year are actually receiving increases to their chapter seventy funds. Uh, many of those districts are the, some of the most needy districts in the state. I don't think anybody would argue that they are in need. Um, but we are not in that category. We are receiving the minimum increase of thirty dollars per student. Um, I don't know when we'll be sort of on the list to, to receive more. I don't know, I don't know how that is. Has been set up. A lot of that has changed due to the pandemic last year. Uh, when, when the first year didn't happen and now we're in year two, and the governor has issued his. Uh, budget, the House's, House Ways and Means budget has come out. I know. House, the Senate, everybody has to weigh in and then ultimately, uh, there'll be a conference committee and the two. Uh, legislative bodies will come up with a budget that will ultimately be approved, get sent to the governor for his signature and that. Usually happens, last year it was a little later than usual, um, or a lot later than usual, but usually right around, you know, mid to late June. Um, we, we have a, an approved budget. So state funding. Has been recognized as not meeting school districts' needs. And it's been addressed. It's just going to take a while for it to. To make its way to us. Um, so we're stuck right now in the previous sort of situation of continuing to receive minimum state aid. Um, so again, the state aid hasn't kept up with educational needs. We know that. So that's how we get here and, and, you know, unfortunately, the four point three million dollars that the town receives. You know, goes to all the educational funding that, that we have. That would be obviously our school district's budget. But that might include, uh, Bay Path assessment. Um, I, I believe, um, health benefits for school staff who, who take it through the town. So there are a lot of expenses. Um, but. A one million dollar cut, sixteen percent. I don't know any school district that can, that withstand that without completely shredding their program.
So before we move on to opening up for questions, actually, why don't you have a drink water there, Mr. Lynn? Before we, um, move on to, uh, questions, which, you know, I can see there doesn't seem to be any questions in the chat, so, or. Oh, you do? Okay. Oh, that's right. Sorry. Um, I forgot. Um, can, you know, one of the things that often comes up in women conversations about the school budget is the school choice numbers. Can you give us a, a review on that as well?
Sure. Um, let me stop sharing this and, um, if people could bear with me and let me sort of. Um, how do I get out of this? This keep.
Maybe move the cursor up and save this. If you move it up, there's a.
One, one question while he's looking for that. Um, we had a question asked. Whether that slideshow that we just saw could be shared somewhere or if it is available somewhere for people that maybe worked at this meeting to attend and, and.
I, I will absolutely share. Um, so what I would like to do is go to budget. And twenty two. So every year in the budget presentation, we do talk about school choice and, um, because frankly. Kids, um, are the funding. I mean, in the end, um, you know, students. Students represent the funding that we receive. And so again, here are the stu- our student enrollment trends since, since two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Uh, the bottom line is this year. We had five hundred and twenty four students in building, thirty six who attended, um, vocational schools, like, well, vocational school, Bay Path.
Which does not, is not part of school choice. There, we, the town pays an assessment to Bay Path.
We are a member of that region.
Right.
Yep. And we had five students out of district in special education, uh, settings. We have ten students attending charter school, um, and that's due to the, um. Sturbridge Village Charter School, over the last several years, when it opened, it has slowly increased the number of grades. I think it started K to two. Added grade three, grade four. Um, we have a hundred.
And just, you know, charter schools are funded by, by taxpayers. They're, they're not a private school. So sorry, just like.
It is a public school that is funded through the town. Uh, school choice students out is a hundred and sixteen. That is plus six over the previous year. Um.
What if we go back all the way, if you look at the chart and go back all the way to thirteen, fourteen, it was.
One twenty nine.
Right.
So the trend is actually going downward.
Yeah, it's interesting. In eighteen nineteen, it was its lowest and that was our highest budget increase of a hundred and fifty thousand, two and a half percent. So yeah, we added the STEM teacher.
And you had the fewest school choice out.
We had the lowest school choice though. And then, you know. Last year, we had a tough budget year and then this year was even more challenging and we saw an increase.
Well, I mean, you know, this year, the pandemic year, there, there's a lot of reasons why people may have made the choices they had to make for their kids in schooling and, you know.
Yeah, there's certainly questions about the pandemic and its impact. School choice in, again. It has sort of risen and fallen over time. The biggest change was homeschool students and. That rose by thirty kids and we had, uh, I would say probably. Twenty seven or twenty eight of those homeschool choices were specific to the pandemic.
And many of them have since returned even when we came back.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we have a homeschool application and. Often parents who chose homeschooling wrote, because of the, the pandemic, I'm choosing to homeschool my student this year. And then private schools, again, is something that rises and falls. We did see some private schools go in person full year. So again, maybe people made that choice because they needed to do that. For work or other reasons that they felt like their child, uh, needed private school. There's a var- variety of reasons, some pandemic related, some I'm sure not. Um, that's just sort of the, you know, these numbers rise and fall, you know, sometimes independent of each other. But sometimes I related to, you know, certainly the pandemic can have an impact. Um, again, there was some implications that school choice numbers have, have doubled and that's just, it's just flat out not true. Um, they were very high, they fall, they fell off, they've creeped back up. Um, and we continue to try to address it as best we can in terms of, um, offering programs and services that. Will encourage students to want to stay. I think that's ultimately where it, um, where the rubber hits the rug.
So, you know, one of the things that, um, Mr. Lynn and I have talked about, because it's been brought up, is, you know, why do people. Choice their children to different districts? And, you know, if, if, I have had conversations with people that, that, you know, they don't know that. When a child goes to another district, the, so North Brookfield, let's say someone sends their kid to, um, Quabon. Five thousand dollars from our school budget goes with that kid to the other district. If someone from Spencer chooses their kid to North Brookfield, Spencer is going to, you know, five thousand dollars is going to come with that, that child from the Spencer district. So that's, that's why it's such a, a big deal in terms for, for, for districts like ours, which are, you know. You know, we are small and are always struggling with the budget. Um, and one question always comes up is why? Why are the reasons that people school choice their kids out? And if you talk to individual families, there's lots of different reasons. Um, you know, we embarked on this regionalization study to find out, you know, um, how, how would regionalization work for. For North Brookville, if we were to look at, um, a couple of surrounding districts. Um, and one of the things that has come up again is, you know, will you do a survey of school choice families and. Um, Mr. Lynn and I talked about it and after the recommendation is made, um, if we are to go forward with regionalization. Um, we would do a survey then of, of families that we can contact who have choice their kids out. And then, then, you know, you'll, you'll probably get a variety of different reasons. But I'm, I'm going to bet that probably at the base of a lot of those reasons is. It comes down to funding. They're going to a different school because it's got a program their kid wants and that have that program because they have the funding to do it. So.
Yeah, programming, whether it's educational, academic. I mean, I mean, athletic, I meant to say, athletic, extracurricular.
Right. So, you know, I mean, I, you know, as a parent, I totally understand the appeal of school choice, but in terms of, um, helping. School districts improve, it's basically, it's a bludgeon, I think, anyway, but. That's beside the point. So anyway. So the last, probably the last, most important thing we want people to know. Before we can move on to questions.
So I, I think, um, you know, people have said, what can we do? Whether it's a parent or whatever, I think.
He actually has two questions in the chat asking.
Yeah. I think, I think attend, you know, school committee meetings, the ten Board of Selectmen meetings, the ten FinCom meetings, they are regular meetings that happen, you know, we are.
Or the third Monday of the month.
Mostly third Mondays, uh.
Except for when there's a vacation.
They're available. I usually list them in my weekly update when they're coming.
It's on your handy dandy school calendar that you get at the beginning of the year.
So, um, you know, but. Selectmen meeting and FinCom meetings are just as important this time of year as they're coming to their decisions as to what to make recommendation on.
And their, their meeting schedule is listed on, um, the town website, which I believe is northbrookfield.net.
Tomorrow at six P M. Great.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Those, those are in-person meetings.
Yeah. So they have, they, I think they have one meeting a month is recorded and then the second meeting month.
No, I just mean, I don't think there's a Zoom option.
Oh, no, there's no Zoom options. No, it's, yeah, it's an, yeah, you have to go and they, they hold them. Now they're holding them at the police station, I believe, still.
I, I think the other thing is, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom meet together, especially during budget season. So it's not just their individual board meetings, but those, those, uh, co-meetings where, where both boards are present. And then lastly, there's nothing more important from a sort of a, a, a democracy, a political process. Um, you know, viewpoint in a small town like North Brookfield and town meeting. Because it is truly a one person, one vote situation. You, you know, these warrant articles are there and people who live in North Brookfield, who are voting age, can go and. Vote one way or the other on whatever those articles are. So in the case of the budget. There's the town budget and the school budget. Those two are, are handled separately, even though the school department is part of the town. Town budget, the school department is, is done separately and it is a, an article, financial article. Um, and people can vote for or against tho- that budget and, and approve it or not, or make recommendations to change it, or. Every citizen has that right. Um. You know, the way North Brookfield has typically handled it is the, the town meeting is scheduled for May and this year it's Friday, May seventh. Here at the elementary school, the audit term, I believe it starts at six thirty.
Well, I think it's seven, actually.
Okay, we can double check that, sorry. And, um. In general, in the past, the, the, they have, uh, moved to delay action on all financial items. And then they reconvene that town meeting in June. With the understanding or expectation, they'll have a little more information from the state at that point about where the budget is. Um. However, you know, that can, that can change and it's really difficult. You know, not to be there to understand the full sort of, uh, nature of, of the various articles. So. It's really important that people are at both meetings because lots of decisions are made.
So, yeah, the Friday, May seventh, uh, meeting is at, um, it is at six thirty and check in begins at six. Uh, the annual town meeting, which is scheduled, I guess, for June fourth, that is at seven thirty. Um, also just a reminder that the town election is May third and that's when people get elected to town boards and that. If you are a registered voter in, in North Brookfield, you go, you know, to the senior center and vote, so.
So, yeah, the, um, and, and so that to me is the most important thing you can do as a mem- you know, a resident of this town is to show up to town meeting. And participate in that political process of making decisions. Uh, if you're not there, those decisions are going to be made. Uh, the, the people who are there get to make them. Uh, so you have to be present to, to, to have a set.
And we will have babysitting.
Yep.
Right? Because I know a lot of, uh, you know, parents, if you get young kids, um. And maybe, you know, you don't want to pay for a babysitter. Um, we will have babysitting.
And would you, um, Mr. Lynn or, or Maria even, um, clarify the process through which. A different budget outcome could be reached on June fourth, just so people understand that this proposed budget. As drastic and as scary as it seems, it's by no means a done deal, because as you said, the, the budget is set at town meeting.
Right. So the Board of Selectmen is responsible for putting a proposed budget forward in a warrant article. If. Any resident of the town, who attends town meeting can call to change that article. Or any article, uh, on the, the warrant. Um, by, by making a motion, be recognized by the moderator, make a motion to increase, decrease. The budget, change language to something, to, to another article. Um. And then there's a process by which there's a vote to actually change the language in the article. If that's approved. Then the, the new article goes up for vote again to, at the same time. It all happens very quickly. Um.
And so, I mean, you know, any individuals, towns person can do that. In the case of the school budget, the school committee. Most likely would be the ones to, um, present an amendment to, to, uh, change the warrant.
And we have done that in recent years and, and been very well supported by the community. The schools have been well supported by the community. So people need.
We appreciate, we appreciate the support we have gotten from the town.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're well aware, I mean, you know, every town around here, the school budget, it's a struggle and it's, it's a, you know, it's a shame that our towns, you know, that the. You know. You know, our state legislator is based in legislature and governor are based in Boston and. You know, they, uh, other than our own representatives, like Senator Gobie or Representative Berthium, you know, there's a very much a suburban, urban focus and we all know that, so. And it's unfortunate.
I did have a question about what people whose kids might be in the school, but they don't vote in town, if there is any way they can help.
So if you're not a town resident, you can't actually vote at town meeting. Um, but I think you certainly can, can be supportive, uh, through advocacy, um, you know.
You could be a babysitter for your friends.
You can still go.
Yeah, you could still go. There's a spot for out of, uh, town people to sit. But, I mean, also it's something like, you know, maybe it's something that your friend has, you know. Well, I mean, this year's a little different, but let's just say you have kids come over and you babysit them while the, the voters go, so something like that, so. Encourage, encourage people to come who are registered voters in North Brookfield.
We only have a couple of other questions that have come through on the chat. Now it's a good time for me to.
Um, yeah, do we? Yep, okay.
Um, one of them is, uh, when a student unenrolls from. One of them is, uh, when a student unenrolls from the school or goes, or transfers to another district or something like that, is there a follow-up process to find out why?
There has not been in the past, um, that, that follow-up.
It's, I don't think it's very typical of schools to do that.
No.
I mean, you know, it's one of those things that it is a very personal choice for a family. And there, I'm sure, you know, some people might be happy to share. Other families might be like, that's none of your business and I'm not answering any questions. So. I mean, I think we're, we will try and do a survey and hopefully we'll get answers from people, but.
Yeah, another question from Jillian Phillips asks if the board of selectmen has offered any information? I think I've known the answer, but as to where the one million dollars is going, if they have cut from the budget.
I, I have received any communication from the board of selectmen or the finance committee other than a one-sentence response telling me what the, their budget recommendation would be. So I, I can't answer that, unfortunately. I wish I could.
I mean, I, I will say that probably if you go to a board of selectmen meeting and say, why haven't you communicated with the school committee? You know, chances are they're gonna say, well, you know, they know when our meetings are and they should be here. So, I mean, there, that is probably going to be a response. You know? Generally speaking, I would have thought in a town, you know, your town boards communicate, especially there around budget season, regardless of whether people can attend meetings. Because, you know, people have jobs and children and so.
Uh, the only other question that I have not brought up is the social-emotional step-up curriculum. Katie Fizik was asking if there is some way of showing how the funds that were stepped up this year for that were spent on specific resources, staff or training?
Could you ask it again? I just wanna, just understand.
I can find her actual wording here. How have the funds been spent so far this year? We already had a social-emotional step-up curriculum, so if funds were spent towards that, how are they spent on specific resources, staff or training? I suggest this might be something where it might be a resource we could refer to because, I mean, all this stuff is public record.
Right. So, I mean, there's a couple of things here. We have, uh, several professional development groups that are focused on uh, social-emotional learning, supporting staff's understanding of how to support kids. So professional development is inexpensive. You know, i- it depends, you know, there's a, there's a couple of different pathways we follow. We have, uh, you know, uh, programs that look at restorative justice. We look at, um, PBIS, um, tiered system of support. And.
Mindfulness.
Say it again?
Mindfulness.
A mindfulness that, and I, I blanked on the program. I'm sorry. Breathe for Change. Yes. So it's, uh, teaching students how to, uh, implement sort of a mindfulness activities in the classroom to help reduce anxiety. So those are some of the ways. Certainly, there's been some curriculum purchases that, you know, our, our adjustment councils and guidance councils have invested in. I cannot give you the specific amounts. I'm sorry. I just don't have that handy.
It's also worth noting that our staff is always seeking, um, grants and resources through DESI. Our, um, PBIS Academy has been fully funded by DESI, so that's not even an expense to the, to the district. And it's still a huge social-emotional learning opportunity for staff training and it's gonna benefit students. And it's a three-year commitment. So that's worth noting.
That's a really helpful answer.
Uh, yeah, that's, thanks, Gus.
Uh, last question I've seen come in was can CARES Act money go toward funding pre-K and kindergarten programs?
Um, we have CARES Act funding already expended in other locate, in other, for other purposes. If we push it towards that, then something else doesn't get funded. I, I, we haven't really sat down and gone over potential cuts. So I can't tell you pre-K is gonna be cut or K is, full day K is gonna be cut. That's not, those were examples of types of things that could occur because they're not legally required. So, you know, I'd hate to, to sit here and say, yeah, we can fund pre-K. I, I just don't know that at this point. We have to really sit down. And ultimately, uh, it will be, uh, up to the school committee to approve a revised budget. You know, upon the administrative team's recommendation. But I would hate to sit here and say, yes, we'll keep that without really going through. I. Cutting one point three million dollars, I think the, the list is going to be amazingly long and painful. And CARES Act money covers right now three hundred and sixty thousand and it's already in the budget. I, I can't double spend it. I wish I could.
I, you know, when, when we were planning for this meeting, I, I asked Mr. Lynn just to give examples of things, you know, that potentially could be cut. I mean, it's, this is an enormous amount of money for our budget and, uh, well, for any school's budget. And it's not something, you know, if we get to the point that those cuts have to be made, it has to be, you know, done in a, well, I mean, I'm not gonna say thoughtful, but it's, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, it's, hopefully we don't get there, but it is something that these, like he said, these are examples of things that may we might not be able to fund. So.
I can't speak to, um, how this has all gone in the past, other than to say I was also on FinCom at one point in time. And I would like to say that this seems like a large cut with no conversation, which was not my experience when I was on FinCom. So I, I do think that just the respect of a heads-up would have been great. And, you know, the optimist in me is still hoping that maybe they meant to type a six and not a five and they just haven't responded yet. But in a town this size, it would be, you know, for whatever the future holds for the three boards, there needs to be a push from townspeople to encourage them to work together because this is not the way it's supposed to be, to go. There should be three committees working together to advocate for the betterment of the town. You know, fire, police, school. This is just not the way it's supposed to go. And I think townspeople need to hold all three committees feet to the fire to make sure that going forward, this is not, the contention is bad. So.
Yeah. I just wanna say, you know, I'm a big believer in cooperation and community and all of us working together to try to make the town the best it can be. And I, I am open to that. I have always been open to that. So, um, you know, I'm sorry that we're at this impasse. And unfortunately, you know, if you, communication has to, you have to have both sides. So. And I'm more than happy. If people want to put my feet to the fire, sure, you know, let me know when the meeting is. I'll be there.
Jennifer Bocus is asking if she could make a comment. I think we're almost done.
I can, I'm gonna unmute. It's your culture.
Oh, yeah, please. Yeah.
Mrs. Bocus.
Did you just say your name and address?
She's unmuted.
Okay, I'm unmuted now, it looks like. Um, Jennifer Bocus, One Hill Side Out. I just had a quick comment, not a question, just a comment. And I want to thank all of you for what you've done, um, as far as preparing the budget. It looks pretty dismal for next year, but hopefully that is a six and not a five. I want to thank the teachers and the administrators for not taking a raise this year. That is commended for that. And this will follow you for years to come. You all know that because I'm an educator myself. And one year we took a zero, a pay freeze, and it does follow you through retirement. So whomever, um, thought that everyone's getting double raises this year should really do a little bit more homework before they make such, um, unsubstantiated, you know, remarks about the budget when they don't really know what's going on with it. Um, so I really commend the teachers and administrators for doing that for the students of North Brookfield. Um, they'll never recoup these funds. You, and you're not taking a double increase this year either. So I just want to thank all of you for what you've done. Because it affects your, your bottom line at home as well. So I just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Bocus. I think Mr. Dupell also. Mr. Dupell asked me if he could unmute. Sam Chair?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, please. Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Dupell.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Deb, I guess I wanted, Debbie, I wanted to reiterate what you had said, been a member of FinCom in the past. Uh, I think I'll call the elephant in the room. Uh, for anyone not to think that this is political, this is intended to create some awareness. This is intended to create some level of involvement in the community to have the conversations. This is what this is. You know, the idea of a sixteen percent budget cut, that's for Chapter eleven companies. That's for folks that are reorganizing. That's not possible. Financially, it's not responsible. And I would have to say that this is a starting point. I, I wouldn't be alarmed that this is going through. I wouldn't be alarmed that we can't come to some sort of an agreement. I, I would disagree a little bit that the teachers, I, I wouldn't say they're getting double raises, but they're not giving up their raise. They deferred their raise. They had to go in from, I think we had forty-one basis points from the fiscal year nineteen to twenty-twenty-one, which was great. That's almost a flat, phenomenal, phenomenal. No one goes on forty-one basis points when you're looking at two, two and a half percent year over year. But the reality is they're catching up. So starting in the new fiscal year, they are going to get the benefit of that additional raise going forward. There's, there's no denying that. And, and that's not necessarily a bad thing, but let's not deny it. It's not getting contractually two or three percent in the new year. It's getting what they were deserved in the prior year plus the new year. So I don't think we should deny that. Totally appreciate the fact that they deferred it, but it's still a liability. I would also ask.
Clarification here. Mr. Lynn has a clarification here.
Mr. Dupell, I'm gonna disagree with you and I'm gonna push back a little bit. Uh, if that's all right. The teachers and the administrators have contracts. It outlines exactly what each person is gonna get.
Yeah.
So if you're a teacher in year one of the deal and you make fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then in year two, you slated to make fifty-two thousand. And in year three, you're slated to make fifty-four thousand.
Yep.
The numbers. In year two, you don't take your raise and you continue, and you earn fifty thousand dollars again.
Mm-hmm.
And then in year three, you go up to fifty-four. You get back on schedule. You don't get that two thousand dollars back that you gave up. That's gone.
Totally agree. I'm not disagreeing. I am not disagreeing. I am not disagreeing. What I'm saying is they gave up one year's raise. And stay with me because I want to push on this point. They gave up one more, one year's worth of that raise, but they are now current and going forward. And the difference would be if they had given up the raise, they would be at fifty-two right now, not fifty-four. Now, I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm not disagreeing with that. What I'm saying is let's call it for what it is. I'm not saying they don't deserve them. I think they do deserve them. We certainly appreciate the deferral. This is a deferred raise. This is not a raise that was given up. It's deferred contractually.
Semantics and deferral versus foregoing.
That's not semantics. That's reality. That's financials. I'll say one other thing. I believe truly that we can find a way forward. But what I would say also is there are sort of fundamental things that we need to think about. Because what's causing this type of conflict year over year about our budgets is the fact that we have to think about what scalability means. We are, if not the smallest, one of the smallest schools in the state that is trying to support our population. And when you look at your per cost of student versus the budget, that is a hard, hard financial exercise. It is. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I would ask Mr. Lynn, quite frankly, if you look at your cost per student, now I understand you made the statement that the teachers are competitive, our administrators are competitive. I will take that at face value. But if you take your total cost of the school system and divide it by your students, what is that number compared to other districts? And we have to acknowledge it. We have to recognize the scalability matters. Because if we cost more per student and kids are still choicing out, that's a business death spiral. We will not survive. Our product is not better than anybody else. And if our cost is higher, we're gonna lose in the end.
Okay, so we do have, um, some responses to what you said, Mr. Dupell.
Well, I, I guess I would just say that is exactly why we have embarked on what is now going on a full year's worth of regionalization study. So I think we can agree on that. I think that is separate from the sort of impending budget crisis.
I agree. I agree. One hundred percent. I, I would, I would totally bifurcate the two. I would say, let's get through the budget. Let's try to get people to understand that this is a draconian move. You can't peel sixteen percent from your budget and expect that we're gonna be able to give. My daughter's in high school. I, I don't want her losing programs and everything else, right? I support the school. I support the school as much as I can. We have to get through the budget, but we have to go in armed with numbers and a plan. Like, you know, let's call it for what it is. Call the elephant in the room. Say, listen, you can't cut our budget sixteen percent. You can't cut a million bucks and expect that everything's gonna be fine. It's just not gonna happen. But at the end of the day, we fundamentally have to start looking forward and say, how do we survive? And I think if you pitch that.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Dupell. That's exactly why we applied for the, a grant from DESI to do a regionalization study.
Yeah.
And that's why the school, the school committee directed Mr. Lynn to do that. That is why we have these meetings. That is why we have the, the study. The study's written. Um, it is available. Hard copies are available at the library, right?
Yep, yep. I agree. I agree. And, and we have to get through this budget. So I would encourage everybody to go to the meeting. We have to have these conversations. You have to amend the budget. You have to make an amendment. And what that is, I would encourage flat. I would encourage flat fiscal year last year to new year. And, and, you know, I would think voters would be fine with that. So what's that? If you look at it quickly, it's like, I don't know, you're looking at three hundred and fifty-six thousand over, over last year? A million dollar cut? No.
So, um, we do, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. We do have a three-minute limit. Uh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So it's okay. So, um, did, did anyone, the administrators or the committee have a comment you wanted to?
Yeah, I'd like to make it. I, I think actually he brings up some good points. And I think we should make a comparison on what our per people expenditures are versus uh, those in the area because I do believe you'll find it to be very, very competitive.
So I'll, um, I'll pipe in then, Mr. Minucci. I just called up on the Department of Education website, the per pupil expenditure report. And the most recent one available is FY nineteen. It does take the state a little while to do these. The state total per pupil expenditure was seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty. Uh, North Brookfield, just scroll down to where we are, was thirteen thousand, four hundred and ten. Do you want to comp? Quabham was sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-four. Clayborg was fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. So very similar to us. Um, I don't know. Do you want? Spencer Brookfield? I'm probably not. I gotta, I gotta alphabetize. Sorry. I gotta, O P is after, oh. Sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight. That is available in the profiles, school and district profiles on the Department of Education website.
You want to share that in the chat? Can you do that? Anybody? DESI's a really fun website to look at. Yeah. Like all of the mass state websites. So thanks, Mr. Dupell, for sharing your, your thoughts. Um, I, someone said they couldn't hear Mr. Minucci. He, what he said was he, he liked the idea of doing a comparison that it would show that North Brookfield is in fact competitive to the surrounding districts. Um, which, looking at the data, apparently is true. So. Any other comments or, and so Mr. Lynn is gonna put that website in. Did you do it already? He put it in the chat. So, I mean, you know, especially if you are a data person, Mr. Dupell, you're gonna love that. He put it in the chat. So, I mean, you know, especially if you are a data person, Mr. DePell, you're gonna love that.
Give yourself a headache. Gives me a headache looking at it all.
Um, is there any other, does anyone else have a, a comment or a question?
Jane Lynn said something earlier, I missed it.
Okay. You wanna unmute Mrs. Hines?
She just wanted to comment. Um, yeah, let me find her.
I got her.
You got her?
Yeah, I found her.
So, Mrs. Hines-
Hi, I, I just wanted to make a comment that recently Mass Live put a list of the 50 least paying schools in the state of Massachusetts, with North Brookfield being 17th among the lowest paying districts. And I have five kids that have gone through the school. I taught in North Brookfield for a while. It would be my choice to, to be here, but you just don't pay enough. And I think that to continue to, as Mr. DePell said, have this be purely political to engage the community, I just think is really sad that these teachers and these students deserve better than this. And I feel like, I don't know why we have to always have it be this big dramatic, we're gonna take away sports to, to, to work collaboratively. I just think it's, it's sad, and I think that um, we're being disrespectful to people, especially in a year that there's been an amazing effort put forth from the teachers that I've seen from my perspective.
I would disagree with you that it is sad. So, certainly, I mean, we will extend yet again to the other boards to meet and talk and see how, where that gets us. Thank you.
But this comment actually seemed to calm down, except for one guy agreeing with Jane.
Okay. All right. Um, so that is, you know, that's the end of the big portion of this meeting. We, we do still have our regular business to cover. I, you know, it'd be great if people stuck around just to hear what it's like, but, um, oh, yeah, sure. Why not? Why not? Okay, so we, we did one thing that, that most of us are probably aware of, is that there was a letter sent around anonymously to many of the households in North Brookfield. Surprisingly, none of the school committee members received this letter. Um, it was very critical of the school committee and of the school administration. That was earlier in the meeting when I referred to the innuendo that's suggesting that our, our superintendent and staff are mismanaging the school budget. That is what I was referring to. Um, Mr. Lynn did write a response, point by point. Um, he emailed that to our, um, you know, our, our, our school community. It's been shared on Facebook. We are going to make an effort to make sure that people who aren't linked to the school who did receive the letter will also get copies of Mr. Lynn's response. I don't know if you wanna do a very quick point by point right now, just to-
Um, yeah, so, I mean, I think the thing I'm most, I guess, concerned with is-
Oh, yes, the first part, yeah.
Is the first bullet point that, that says the school committee has created a wish list of 169 books for the upcoming school year, which contains some very disturbing materials and authors. Subjects of these books, along with some of the authors, are inflammatory, age inappropriate, and likely to confuse children rather than educate them. Much of the reading is racist against white individuals, encourages gender confusion, and/or encourages hate.
Can you pass me the books?
That is-
So, why don't you explain exactly what our teachers, our, the staff's goal was in creating a list here?
So, so the inaccuracy lies in that the list that was presented to the school committee, not for approval, but for recognition. A group of teachers spent a good portion of the year looking at, along with the other members of our North Brookfield Elementary School teaching staff, but four teachers sort of led the charge, to look at children's literature, both fiction and nonfiction books, that allowed children to see someone like themselves, either the author or the characters in the book. Research clearly indicates that's a strong support for students, because they, they see someone who looks like them or is like them, either their race, their religion, their ethnic background, et cetera.
Their disability?
Their disability, their gender, whatever. If they see someone like themselves, they see the possibilities of a canny. Oh, that person's an author. I could be an author. Oh, that person did something great in history, and they're like me, I could be like them. Kids connect to literature when the people, the characters in the book, or the author of the book, is like them. So, the teachers were looking for literature, children's literature, that engaged more children so that they could see that. And to frame that as, I'll, I'll quote it rather than my own language, because it would be unfair. "Inflammatory, age inappropriate, and likely to confuse children," and that "those books are racist against white individual or encourages gender confusion and/or encourages hate" is completely off-base. And frankly scary that anybody would look at any of those books and feel that way.
Well, and it's not just for, you know, books for children to recognize characters like themselves, but also for children to see characters that they may not encounter on a day-to-day basis.
Who are different for them then, because, go ahead, please.
No, I was just gonna say, that is the essence of literature. You read a book, you get taken outside of your reality, and you see the world through a broader lens. And if, you know, and, and when that group of teachers presented at our school committee meeting, we all, although we did not come up with the list or have anything to do with it, we cannot claim credit for it whatsoever, but we applauded them because that is the essence of education.
So, so this was not a school committee-approved list. This was a teacher list to see if I'm teaching a unit on, I don't know, fill in the blank, is there literature that we can add to our curriculum that will support these ideas?
And I, I think that's a key point there, add to. I mean, I'm really proud in my participation and my involvement in North Brookfield to see how much the amount of, number of books has grown in the elementary school, to provide kids, you know, lots and lots of choices to read from, because as I've learned from the wonderful teachers, that for kids to learn to love reading, you know, they gotta have different books to choose from. Like, you know, when I was growing up, I don't know, okay, I'm not that old, but like Nancy Drew, right? Nancy Drew was a book that girls were given, not, not a book I really was interested in. Um, you know, but having a book about, you know, a mystery book, or a book about science, a nonfiction book about science, or a book about a biography, you know, all these different sorts of books that a kid can go, oh, hey, I wanna read about that. And then they sit down and they read and they learn to read, which is really pretty much the essence of education, right, at its base. Let's all learn to read. Um, and so, I think it's key that this was, this, this list of books was to add more books to the wonderful collection that's already there. Not taking away books, adding to books with, and adding books that maybe had some different perspectives.
Can I also add, it's important to note that this was a K to 12
Oh, yes, yeah.
study. The teachers were not looking at just that elementary-level books. They were looking at the scope of books that could be recommended to staff in the district. So, many of the books that were on there certainly wouldn't be appropriate for elementary-age students, but might be appropriate for middle or high school students. So that that, I don't think that was taken into consideration.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So, and, you know, obviously, the teachers that put this list together are all very experienced teachers and knowledgeable about what, you know, developmental level kids are at and what is appropriate for them to be reading.
So, I, I sent out this letter, and I've received dozens of wonderful emails back. Uh, and I wanna thank those people for, for sending those, because those are very heartening. Uh, it feels good for someone to say, thank you for saying that. And, and I've received a lot of that. I did receive one email that was really negative. And the negative email really pointed to the fact that I did not address the, the bigoted nature of the comments in this anonymous letter. And upon reflection, maybe that person is right. I, I don't know, like, I've never done this before. I'm doing the best I can. Um, you know, we're making decisions on the run here when we see things like this. Um, I wish I could say I had some experience in this, but I don't. And I, I don't know what's right or wrong, but I tried to address the inaccuracies in the letter, not necessarily the, the, the sort of bigoted component of those comments. I wanted to point out that they were incorrect when they say that the school committee approved it and that, you know, all of a sudden something terrible was gonna happen to kids. Um, because that's how it's sort of written. And that, you know, in some way, a book about, you know, someone, an African-American or a Latino person, or a gay person, or a-
Disabled person.
Disabled person, or someone with a different religious background encourages white hate. I don't see the connection. And, and, you know, that's, maybe I wasn't strong enough in the letter, and I, I questioned myself on that, but I do appreciate the really positive feedback that, that so many folks have given me, uh, to the point that leads to-
So, this is actually, I mean, and this is a positive that I, I'm really, really happy about. And, you know, North Brookfield has always been an extremely generous communities. Uh, you know, whenever we have needed anything at the school, if we put out the call for the food pantry, for art supplies, for, you know, supporting music, you know, um, people of, you know, all, all parts of the community, whether they have kids at the school or not, contribute. Um, so it just so happened that, well, as it happens, like, all of the books in North Brookfield, these were not have been purchased, but through the school budget, it probably would have been through a grant. Uh, the PTO is always very generous to the school book budget. Um, um, so, um, I actually, I, I did ask, um, the staff to make an Amazon wishlist of the books. Um, they, they did curate the books, because as Mrs. Priestley mentioned, some of them were not elementary-school age, so those books were taken off the, the list that was shared with me. Um, and I think, um, there was about 150-odd books on the list, and within about 36 hours, they were all purchased and donated. Um, and so the list has been fulfilled, and it's, it's really heartening to see that. And, um, so, it's really exciting, because Amazon delivers so fast. I came today to see Mr. Lynn, and there's like this big pile of, of boxes. I'm like, oh, wow, what's that, office supplies or something? I don't know. So, I walked by, and then Mr. Lynn said, well, you know what those are. Those are the books. So, he let me open them, and, um, I just, I, I asked him to bring a couple, just as an example, which way do I point? The camera's over there. Um, so this one is called "The Ugly Vegetables." Um, and it is written by a woman named Grace Lynn. Um, sure. What's that?
Like Elizabeth has her specific camera on.
So, that one, it's, um, it looks like it's a, you know, I'd like really quickly, it's a, well-
You wanna pass, okay.
So, I'll just, okay, let me just talk about, about, um, an Asian family and their, their vegetable garden, which grows garden, vegetables different, say, than, you know, um, perhaps the vegetables I would, my, my children and I would grow in our garden. Um, I picked another one, which is about a fourth-grade girl, and it's about friendships and books.
And books. Terrifying.
Um, and then this last one I chose is actually a biography of Muhammad Ali, so.
And it's amazing. People of my age know who Muhammad Ali is. Many of our elementary students go, who? Which just shows how old I am, but-
Anyway, it's just, um, so I, I wanna thank all the very generous people who did purchase books and, um, it's, it's-
And your books have been added to the Amazon wishlist, just FYI.
So-
Yep, okay, we can share.
If I could just, like, end this sort of, I guess, diatribe from my, and I appreciate you hanging in there with me on this. I sent this letter, and believe me, it, it was a challenging letter to write. But I feel wonderful. I have this, I have stacks of books. So, the, the letter we sent out pointed out the inaccuracies, and the people of this town, who, the great, the great majority are, are doing the right things, as Maria said, they see a need, they fill it. And these books are purchased, and our teachers can now review them and say, where do they fit? So, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's so heartening to wake up and come to a, a school district where people do care, and people do give whatever they have. So, I, I really appreciate the, the fact that I sent out a letter and people took time, went onto Amazon, found a book that hopefully connected, they connected to, and purchased it with their own money and donated it to us. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the community. And if you did that, and you're on this meeting, thank you. If you're not on this meeting, hopefully someone who is on this meeting will tell you. Um, thank you. I don't know who donated the books. There's no names, and it's all anonymous, so, thank you.
Do you want me to read the thank you from the teachers?
It's so heartening. Please.
So, because, you know, the teachers wanted to acknowledge, you know, all the many individuals who purchased the book, but, of course, because Amazon doesn't give you that information, um, they did ask us to share a thank you, and if you give me a second, I will find it. Sorry. Taking me longer than I planned. Sorry, this is taking me longer than I thought. Hold on, let's see. Okay, so, um, this is from the teachers. "We wanted to send out a most sincere thank you to those of you who shared and contributed to the, um, quote, 'own voice,' unquote, book collection for the students at NBEES. In the last 24 hours, we have witnessed how quickly a goal can be reached when a community focused their resources and good intentions. What was a list that we had expected to pare down and purchase over time has been fulfilled. We are excited to integrate these titles into grade-level units of study and to share these beautiful stories with our developing readers and writers at NBEES. It takes a village, as they say. Thank you for joining ours." There you go.
Go.
All right, so, um, we're moving on, I guess?
Yeah.
All right. So, um, and I'm gonna ask all of you just for highlights.
Yep, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit my reopening highlights, and the biggest thing to hit is the USDA has approved free lunch for all students through next year. So, students come to school, they can get a lunch for free. That was through the end of this year. It has been extended through next school year. So, your child can eat breakfast and lunch for free this year and next. I think that's the biggest thing to share. Um, the only other thing is, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services has updated the close-contact, um, rules, and that will now be match three feet, which is what kids can be separated, would need to be separated by. So, that really makes sense. So, so that's, uh, that's the reopening update. In terms of end-of-the-year activities, we are moving forward with a number of different activities. Some of them will look very different. Uh, I think most important is probably, again, for our seniors and, and graduation. We are working with the class advisors, student leaders, LPAC, et cetera, to plan graduation, and we're gonna have more information on that. We have some preliminary sort of ideas that we really need to sort of run through and, and make sure that they're gonna work for everybody. But right now, I can share with you, the, the senior class would like an outdoor graduation. Um, we ran our first outdoor graduation, like, I don't know how long, maybe it's been forever last year, but it was a parking lot graduation in cars. They would like seated outside, so we're looking at an outside graduation. Uh, we are working with LPAC to make sure it gets, um, broadcast. Uh, the outside graduation right now would be on our school grounds, and we're trying to figure out the best location for that. By having an outdoor graduation and with the amount of space that we would have available, each student would be able to have six attendees. We do do need to maintain masks and, um, physical distancing between non-family members. So, families need to be separated, but husbands and wives and siblings- husbands and wives and siblings can sit together and don't have to be six feet apart. And we'd also like to have a graduation parade, which we sort of re reintroduced last year, which was absolutely fantastic at the end of graduation for the kids to line up and to have the police and fire escort them through town. So this
Yeah.
It was really fun. The kids loved it and so didn't a lot of the parents.
Um, I just, uh, if I can just interrupt you for a second, um, Mrs. Hines, I I just want to address you personally. It was brought to my attention that my response to you might have come across as as rude and I I didn't mean it that way at all. I'm I'm really frustrated by the lack of communication between us and the other boards. And it's something that I have found very, very frustrating. So I'm sorry if if my response to you came across as rude, didn't mean it that way.
Uh, my next, you know, so moving on to overseas trips, uh, which is an interesting one. You have a a letter in your packet from uh, from Mrs. Rose. She is a French teacher at the junior senior high school. And she's requesting permission to organize a trip to France during the summer of twenty two, so not this coming summer, the next summer. Or summer of twenty three. Now, these are fantastic opportunities for kids. It's just something, right now, I don't know how to move forward since we're not really back to normal as we all sit here in masks and sort of think about, um, you know, variants and overseas in Europe. It's hard to approve a trip. Because the way this works is you hire a company and then you have to stop paying them. And we had all sorts of issues and many districts did with these types of trips for parents to get refunds. So what I would suggest is that we that you grant her permission or allow me to grant her permission to pursue getting information, but certainly not to sign up for you know, sign any contracts or anything until we get more information about where this is going. And I mean, the pandemic.
I think actually, a lot of the those student over retreats, uh, overseas trips have actually changed their policies of for for the refund. So I I do think it's it's probably something that's worth um, her pursuing and getting, starting to get the information.
I I can do that. I just want to make sure the committee is okay with that, just.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Gather information.
Absolutely gather information and hopefully, um, you know, it's.
All right, I will, Mrs. Powers and I will sit down with Mrs. Rose tomorrow and and let her know that, you know, you've approved her or gathering information at some point, maybe in the next meeting or so, she could come and present what she's found out for you to consider. You know, whether you approve at that meeting or a future meeting to to and 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 go from there and she can sort of figure out what's going to work and even start to share with some kids the idea that might exist. That's always dangerous because
Right, people get excited, yeah.
Fifteen and sixteen year olds in two years, we're going, we could be going to France. They hear we're going to France. You know, we certainly don't want to set them up for disappointment, but you know. You can't really, you know, but you can't really start to plan a trip unless you know how many kids are going to go. And and so that's the the sort of the rub that she would have is she's got to tell them what the trip might look like and for kids to to at least tentatively say, I want to go, then she can say, oh, I have thirteen kids. I have forty two kids. I don't know. So I think I think that would be fabulous for her to be able to do some work and and bring some information in one of you, you know, either the mayor of the meeting.
Yes.
And that's it.
Um, Mrs. Powers, high school.
Thank you. So the, I just wanted to have a few things. One is the unity week that was put on by student council and the G S A, which is the Gay Street Alliance, um, before break, they put together kind of one whole week, but we're still hybrid. So it was really two weeks of really just educating and sharing about the LGBT two I A as well as racial justice, social ethics and mental health awareness. Those are the four major pillars of the experience. Um, there was different days that had different kind of spirit points that were awarded and really just bringing important topics up with this year. So thank you to the student council, G S A, and both Miss Malone, student supervisor, and Mr. Keller, who's a G S A advisor for Bill and the talking room together. And the other announcement is you will be seeing um, a survey really soon on from the branding committee. We're down to two math spots. Uh, so you'll be seeing a survey that will get some more feedback um, of actual images. So stay tuned for that in the next couple of weeks.
So, um, and I I have to ask this, will the elementary school students be surveyed?
Yes, what we did last time the survey went out is a lot of teachers did things in their class and then
Okay.
Some feedback.
Okay.
Um, but yes, definitely go down to the whole district, the staff, and then it will be put out for the community as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and our upper elementary will allow the students to respond and then our younger elementary students.
Yeah. Okay. Nice.
It'd be good that there'll be like an actual, like, image for younger kids to see, like, you know.
And we want to thank Mr. Uh, say it again?
Messier?
Messier, yeah. And his company for working with us. All right. Mrs. Priestley.
I have two things I want to highlight tonight. One is the rescheduled Earth Day, which is very exciting, but we are still going to get to hold the celebration, as you know, Friday. But we are rescheduling the event for this Friday, so everyone should look forward to that. And then the second thing is, I want to highlight, this is not in your report, but um, it was mentioned to me earlier today that the Starbucks store, the Starbucks program, which is a big part of our tier one P D I S program, has really taken off. And one of the things that we do is the students can turn in their Starbucks. They look like this. They're a little ticket. They can turn them in for prizes, but they can also turn them in for privileges. And one of the privileges that um, a few students have purchased this week has been, before this week, I should say, is to be a co-host on the morning announcements. So we had Caitlin Toomey who joined me um, a few weeks ago, and then we'll have three students this week who will be featured in as a co-host in the morning announcements. And there's other things, like a lunch with a staff member, come to lunch early, uh,
Wasn't there?
The counselor. There's a lot of different things that they can purchase with their Starbucks. And the kids are really into it. It's creating a really positive vibe in our school and it's helping to encourage those positive behaviors that we really want to see in the students.
I saw, I saw one was a classroom party. A girl purchased it for the whole class.
One was your, you know, you can
Not a party, a dance, dance party, sorry.
Uh, so we had a few students that purchased those and and it's not only fun for them, but it finds out their peers and it's just a great way.
And the staff.
And the staff. Who doesn't love a good dance party?
Thanks. Awesome. Uh, Mr. Manucci.
Thank you. Um, I have a bunch of things, but I'm only going to do two.
Okay.
So as as you know, I've talked about Unified Sports, uh, for the last two years quite a bit, and we were planning on launching a unified basketball team this year, but because of the endemic, we were not able to do it. But what we've done is kind of making lemons, lemonade out of lemons, uh, decided to have the Unified Bas- Basketball Clinic for each Wednesday for the next four Wednesdays, uh, right after school. Um, so we'll we'll basically be formulating what next year should be a team. In Unified Sports, take students with disabilities and mix it up with typical students and give us those students an opportunity to participate in competitive sports. So this is our launching pad for this. I'm I'm very excited and I I think it's going to serve our students well. And the the only other thing I wanted to mention is that we, and you've heard me mention this before, we had uh, our tiered focus monitor reviews this year, which is when Desi comes in and looks at, you know, how we're performing in certain areas. And this this year, uh, this past year, I should say, we were looked at for special education and also for English learners, E L S, L S rather. And both of those are wrapped up and we have completed those and we are in very good position right now, so.
Good.
That was fantastic work by Mr. Manucci because those are not easy reviews. The Desi puts you through kind of the wringer and uh, he's done a fantastic job getting that in place and um, and up to speed where it needs to be. Thank you.
Um, back to Mrs. Powers.
All right, so my one update for curriculum, um, and it's actually an update to the document that I submitted to you. So we applied for a grant opportunity that was an extension to the Student Opportunity Act. And one of the things that we looked at is early college program, and we found out last week that we were accepted. So we got, we have received a thirty thousand dollar grant to establish a true early college program. Um, we've been working, I've been working with Quinn Sigma Community College to create a program with them. So we're in the very beginning stages of that, where our students will be able to take remote classes through Q C C. And again, we refunded thirty thousand dollars to kind of get this going and off the ground this year. So more in photo con, but super excited.
Yeah, that's excellent.
The the great thing about that is, as a junior, you could take two college level classes and then as a senior, you could take two. So technically graduate high school with twelve college credits that are acceptable at any University of Massachusetts college. Because Quin Sig is part of the state college program. Um, it's an amazing opportunity for our our students to, you know, we're not close to a lot of places for kids to be able to drive to an early college experience. So we are exploring a remote only and last check, I don't think there were any high schools that were doing remote connection to college classes for this school. So we could really be a, almost like a pilot program for this. But, you know, it's 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 wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our kids.
Uh, Mr., actually, Mr. Shaw, why don't you go first and then we'll jump back to Mrs. O'Hara.
So just quick highlight, uh, you know, last week was was vacation week, so we got a lot of extra cleaning done, but we got a lot of groundwork done and I didn't get a chance to write in my report. Uh, thank you to the D P W that did come up and street sweep all our parking lots and and down through the driveways. And also to the Tupper family, uh, thank you very much for Earth Day. Your Earth Day participation and coming through and and cleaning up some uh, trash that is falling around the uh, which I'm surprised you weren't chasing it on Friday. It was kind of windy.
Yeah, a lot of it was stuck in the brambles.
Yeah, it was. But anyway, that's that's my quick update.
And then just we have the two outdoor shade structures are completed. Uh, it's going to be a wonderful addition to our learning spaces.
And they and they do hold snow.
See, that's good to know. That's why, that's why we had to have snow in April, right? Um, I don't see Mrs. O'Hara on tonight. Um, I don't think.
She was on, she had to log off.
She had to log off, okay. Um, uh, so quickly, her report, uh, she said, since the return of all students with devices, there has been a strain on the network.
I mentioned this.
You did already. So that's, um, and other than that, the um, devices that students borrowed from the elementary school are being returned and assessed, and they will go back into circulation in the elementary classrooms. All right, thank you all very much. Um, we have no old business?
No.
We have no policy?
No policy.
So we're moving on to a couple items we have to vote on, Debbie and Ruth.
Yep, so school choice is a yearly vote and it really requires two votes. If vote, vote number one is, does the school committee want to continue to offer school choice? If the vote is no, anybody that's already in school choice can obviously stay, but we wouldn't admit any new school choice. If the vote is yes, you would like to, the district continue in school choice, and I am recommending that. You then uh, ask to vote on the number of seats available in each, at each grade level. Um, and in your packet, there are a couple of documents. One is my memo that describes that and then recommendations from Mrs. Powers for the junior senior high school and Mrs. Priestley for the elementary school for the number of seats that are available. We try to base that on uh, class size numbers uh, that we currently have. Uh, we try to limit K to two to around twenty two, twenty three students per class. Grade four through twelve, we look at fifty per class. In kindergarten, we do not make recommendations for because kindergarten registration is so unpredictable. There are years you can get thirty five kids and years that you can get fifty kids. Uh, and by law, kindergarten classes can't go over twenty five. So if you get more than fifty kids, we have to add a teacher to go to a third section. Um, so I would recommend the uh, open school choice seats per those memos that I can read through in kindergarten, zero in first, zero in second, zero. Third grade, there would be sixteen available seats for grade twelve. This grade six, sixth grade sixteen, seventh grade nine, eighth grade four, ninth grade twenty two. We have, this is thirty, there's thirty nine kids expected in ninth grade plus eleven that are going to Bay Path that have been accepted. In tenth grade, three spaces, eleventh grade twenty eight and twelfth grade fifteen. Uh, so if you do vote to continue school choice, I would recommend those as the open seats. And as soon as that's approved, if you do approve it, we would make that available to people to apply for those open seats.
Uh, so if we could have a motion um, to approve unless there's any questions regarding the school choice seats numbers.
One question is this, um, so the the numbers are, we're expecting a bump back, hopefully anyways, for the kids who are home schooled potentially coming back to school.
Yeah, it's it's hard to predict that. You know, so we try it, you know, we have to do it by um, June first. But the sooner we, we've done it in April in the past, it allows us to get that information out to parents because this is the time of year they're looking.
Any other questions? Um, all right, so we need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve that we approve school choice for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
And a second? All in favor?
So that would be unanimous, thank you.
Ruth? Are you there?
I think she is there.
Yeah, okay, great.
And then the second motion would be to approve the number of seats as listed or amended, if the committee wants to amend those numbers.
I don't think we have any amendments. So if we could have a motion to approve the seats as listed.
Motion to approve the seats as listed.
All second. All in favor?
Hi.
That would be also unanimous, thank you. All right, uh, next, um, last year, when the budget crisis hit, uh, we we made some adjustments and we uh, divvied up the duties of the junior senior high school principal between Mrs. Powers and myself. And what we did was we um, we created addendums to our current contracts for one year and we I guess, took it for a test drive to see if this is, you know, how we want to continue. Mrs. Powers and I both met with Mrs. Tucker and we put it in the budget to continue that. Um, so these would be addendums to our contract to receive an additional stipend to act as co-principals. Stipend that I would receive is an additional twenty thousand dollars. The additional stipends I was received is twenty five thousand dollars. Mrs. Powers did the majority of the work. She deserves more of it, so.
And this is, um, you know, in lieu of, which we still haven't been able to hire a permanent principal for the
Right.
High school, which would, of course, probably be somewhere in the hundred to hundred fifteen thousand dollar range.
I think we were, at last check, one hundred and thirteen thousand and that is
Right, it's average.
Very, very low for a high school principal, especially a junior senior high school.
Um, does anyone have any questions? Are they in a motion to approve the addendum, excuse me, addendum to Mrs. Powers and Mr. Lynn's contract to work as co-principals of the junior senior high school?
A motion to approve.
I motion to approve the addendum for them to continue working as co-principals of the high school.
Any, I need a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Thank you. All right, next, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Powers, but each year, the High School Program of Studies needs to be approved. This is obviously based on where we're at right now. Unfortunately, depending on how the budget turns out, it might have to be adjusted to get the scheduling moving. We have to start now. So in your packet, I didn't print out the 60-page document, but I did share it with you in the, in the folder.
Is there any, any significant changes, Mrs. Powers?
The only significant changes, there's a couple courses that we're adding. So we're adding a theater exploration course that we started this year for seventh grade or also adding a semester long for the junior, the high school side of things. Some of our courses that are in rotation, such as this year taught physics, next year we'll teach chemistry. We're adding another rotation in for a different science class. So we've been teaching anatomy and physiology for multiple years. So we're now adding a semester-based forensic science course. So that's going to go on rotation with anatomy and physiology.
Cool.
We'll continue to offer as community courses. Right now, we have the dual enrollment in there as the SOPIA learning platform, but with the new grant, we'll be, we'll be tweaking that a little bit. So just a couple course changes, but mostly it's, it's the same.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Powers regarding the course of instruction at the high school? And if we could have a motion to approve the program of studies for 2021, 2022?
I motion to approve the program of studies for 2021, 2022.
And a second?
One second.
All in favor? I actually don't see any donations.
No, I didn't have any.
Okay. All right, so I'm actually going to ask Ruth, would you like to adjourn us tonight, Ruth? Ruth?
I think I have to take her off mute.
Oh, okay.
She can't.
Oh, okay, she can't.
She's probably trying, but.
Yep.
I keep trying, but I can't. I make it a motion to adjourn.
Ooh, I'll second then.
Sorry, Deb, you had to.
Totally usurped my role, Ruth.
All right.
I want to say thank you to the people who, who hung with us the entire meeting. Thank you. And actually just thanks to all the people who attended as well. So, so long. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everybody.